Okay, thank you. Testing. Are we ready to go?
Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, March 1st. I'd like to welcome you to our work session. Present in the boardroom, we have members Donley, Lessons, and Bellamy. Online, we have members Higgins, Jacobs, and Wilson. In the boardroom, we have Dr. Bishop and several of our amazing staff who are here. And with that, we will, I'd like to call us to order. And that takes us to item B, which is our routine request for information. I don't think there is any, but we're gonna just look to make sure. No. Very quick turnaround. So I think, looking at, looking at our... Alright, so it looks like we have no new items. And we have previously prioritized everything that we've gotten from board members. So I think we're, we're good. Thank you, Katie. So the next item on our agenda is our superintendent's search update. And this is our, today we will see the data that has been collected both internally and externally brought to the process. So we will have a presentation from Ray and Associates, which is the consultant search firm, who will share their information. And then we will have Leadership Anchorage, who did deep community work around what the community wants to see in our next superintendent.
Madam President.
Yes.
Madam President, I was out in a couple of schools today, and I was just requesting as during this section of the work session, if I could go catch up and get ready for our meeting.
Yes, you may. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have fun. Now, I can't remember who I said was gonna go first. So is it Ray and Associates? Are you going first today?
We are prepared to do that if you would like to, but it's up to you.
Yeah. So, because I recall Carmen had a, had to pick up her kid from school at 3 o'clock. And so let's have you start. And, and then we will be ready for her when she comes onboard.
That sounds great. I know our president, Mike Collins, is planning to join us. I don't see him quite yet, but he reminded me about this meeting just a short time ago. So I assume he'll be joining us in any moment, but I'm happy to begin. My name is Dr. Steve Chestnut, and I worked with Ray and Associates for about the last year. Very pleased to be working on the Anchorage search. And one of, one of the important parts of, of that search process that we always utilize is our, our community survey. And so it's very interesting to do that survey, and it's not just of the community, but all the major stakeholder groups. And we call it our 31 characteristics report. And you should have received about 12 pages of handouts that describe all of that. And so since we are just beginning, and Mike just joined us, I, I'll let him take it from here, Mike. I was just about to launch onto an explanation of our 31 characteristics report and the summary of information.
Well, thank you, Steve. I had a little, little challenge getting in. This is my fourth try, and I'm delighted to be with you all. So thank you very much. No, no, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I really want to thank Katie for all the help going, you know, getting us here and going forward. And Steve, you know, they'd probably be happier if you just continued, but I'll, I'll take it for a few moments. So, so Steve and I are gonna share with you the building of your profile, which is what guides the selection process in terms of as, as we proceed through the candidate selection, from having reviewed, you know, your, your applications, but more importantly, having reviewed those that we'll bring to you on March 13th, and then, and guided, guided our selection process and guided yours. So we have done, as you know, internal constituent group interviews. And now we are, and you will hear from us now, and then you'll hear from Leadership Anchorage, who was kind enough to roll up your sleeves and do some really good work with your external group. And so what we're gonna share with you today is the results of your survey. And also, which, which actually, interestingly enough, align with what our themes and tenants that came out of our internal constituent group reviews. The way we do that is it's a Survey Monkey format. There are 31 qualities that appear, your community, and hopefully all of you responded to those and selected the 10 of the 31 that you thought was important to you. In doing so, we then looked at those, and we'll share with you the results in a spreadsheet format from teachers, from students, from administrators, from community members, from parents, et cetera. And you'll see the different categories. I'm pleased to report that you had a total of 1,619 responses. Two of those were in Korean. One of those was in Russian. One of those was in Somali, Somali, Samoan, I think. Please help me. Eleven were in Spanish, and 1,603 were in English. And that's the results we're gonna share tonight. So we will, we will talk about from those 31 and what all these groups said, and when we tally them all up, we'll share with you the rec, the 10 recommended characteristics or qualities that will guide the rest of the selection process. And we will also offer to you, based on the, the compilation of the spreadsheet and the different groups, two others to consider if you choose. So you could have 12 instead of 10, which is fine. Steve, if you'd be so kind as to share your screen, then we can look at both the, the results, but also particularly the spreadsheet. And you may have to, I don't know if you can, you may have to try to expand it, because it's, it's pretty hard to read.
So is that, is that overly detailed spreadsheet showing up right now?
Yeah, it's right there. I don't know if you can make it any bigger for people. That was my own question.
It is showing up.
There you go. There you go.
Okay, that's about as close as I can get.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. And we, board member, it's just a, you will get this information as well. I, I mean, yeah, you could pull it up now, or you should have it in your email somewhere.
Oh, you will see the breakdown of the raw votes, where they ranked of teachers, of administrators, of, of, of support staff, of parents, of students, of non-parent community members, and you'll see your own in the Board of Education. So that's what you have before you. Steve, for just a second, if you could kind of scroll down a little bit, just so they can see the, just kind of the look of all 31. And then we'll go to the next, the, the slide below.
Okay, ready for the slide below?
I think that's much more helpful, because it's designated. Great. Yeah. One more. Okay. So you will see that, that the number one quality combined with 13 gives you basically your, your number two ranked quality, willing to listen to input, but is a decision maker. You'll see that number two has leadership skills to respond to opportunities/challenges of diverse student body and community would be your first selection in a combined ranking. And they go all the way down. So you can see 2 to 1, 6 to 4 as they're ranked down. And you have all this, by the way. It appears to see on your individual iPads or laptops. And then if you could, and then you see the, and what we do show you is the combined ranking and your ranking. So you have some idea of proximity, because the combined ranking is everybody, and then the, obviously the board ranking is yours. And overall, in most cases, you're very close. If you scroll down a little further, Steve, just so they can look at the rest of them. Okay, great.
So what does...
Those are the highlights of what your community said.
Recommended, recommend, considered.
Right.
What does that...
And we have a tally sheet for you, Madam President, that, that we're gonna show you. We just wanted to see you the scope, wanted you all to see the scope of this.
Okay.
And also, the, the entire participation is very credible of your community and where they fall. Now, Steve, if we could look at the, the tally sheet, the results of the tally sheet here, the... It's not there. It's another, it's another document.
I may need a minute to find that. If you give me a second.
Sure. It was in the, the forums that Molly sent us. It's the 10 recommended, I think it's called.
Yes, I have it right here. Give me just one second.
No, no worries. It's all good. So why, why are Steve's doing? There are a couple of board members that have asterisks. Are those board members? Are those staff? Why are there asterisks, by the way? There you go. If you could raise it up just a little so they can read, just a touch, there you go, so they can see recommended and considered. So if you look, if you take the, the the results of that, not too far, so they can see all, at least the 10 first. There you go. So now you see which ones surfaced from, and, and including your, your perspective, your opinions. That these become part of this, you know, rubic, rubic, if you, you know, if you will, part of the, the, the consideration as we look at candidates and what it says. Because this is what it says that Anchorage is looking for in your next superintendent. And then if you scroll up just a shade, so we can see the consider. There you go. That's, you don't need to go up there. You can, I think, get them all on the screen, maybe. A little bit further. Okay, there you go. So I think the conversation is, do you have questions about the process? Or those, those characteristics that emerges? And then the second question is, are, if you're comfortable with the recommended, do you want to add one or both of the considered? So Madam President, that's where we sit at the moment. Not trying to move too quickly through this, but just to give you an opportunity to see what you and your community, both internally, from a survey standpoint, internally and externally have said. And I will tell you, the themes and tenants that came out of Ray and Associates' work on, on our internal constituent groups were, were very, very much reflected in these items. I mean, almost to a T.
So thank you. I think it would be useful to review the process, the internal process that we used while the, yeah, in this discussion, just to review the process that we use to talk with our internal stakeholders.
Okay. Do you want to speak to that, or would you like us to speak to that?
I'd like for you to do that, please.
Okay, our pleasure. Steve, you wanna take that for a second? What, how did, what did we do with the groups, and how do we do it?
Sure, I'd be glad to do that. First place, the first thing that we do, and where we start is by interviewing individual board members. And I had the opportunity to speak to four different board members. And so it's good to see some of you in person tonight. And we think we were talking on the phone, and we did that. And really to ask them, you know, their opinions individually of what they believe the new superintendent should be. So that was a very good discussion, and got some good feedback from that. And then, of course, we interviewed all seven board members. I only did four, but a colleague of mine did the other three. I believe Molly did them, or Mike, I forget whom, but. Anyway, another important part of that is to talk to stakeholder groups. And so you helped us identify groups of teachers, principals, community members, parents. And I had the opportunity to work with several of those groups. I worked with the principal group and got some very good information from them. And I have been struck throughout the process how there's just a lot of agreement between what the survey said that you just looked at and what these stakeholder groups talked to us about. So I gathered feedback from principals. I worked with the parent group. I worked with the teacher group. And so it was very helpful for me to hear from them and the kinds of things that they were interested in, in the new superintendent. And very much in alignment with, with what Leadership Anchorage has been sharing with us on weekly calls, as, as well as the survey, as I mentioned.
If I could add to that, so the other, the other, the other groups where we had student groups. And then we had, I did the student groups, and then also did your, your association or union leadership as, as a group. So you had central office, cabinet, and principals, and parents, and students, et cetera. So we did the internal part. Obviously, Leadership Anchorage will report in a little bit of their good work and how they worked with, what, what they did with the community. We do it in a process that every group gets asked the same questions. There are eight of them. They really have, they really explore and look at some major points. What are the positive strengths of the district? What are the positive pieces of the Anchorage community at large? What are the critical issues that will face your new leader? What are the qualities, characteristics, and leadership management styles you'd like to see in your new leader? We ask them if there are other items that they want to make sure that they can express their concerns. So they share additional items with us that might not be specific to a given question. We then actually ask them to to then give us feedback on, are there any questions or topics that they would like to see included in, in the interview questions that we present to you for consideration? So we take those into account and look at those in relationship to our typical suggested interview questions and make changes as appropriate. Or we use them in other places, either for the second interview, and as you, and, or, or in the development of finalist questions as, as we get to that point. They also were asked, is there anyone that they would like us to at least make contact with that would have, consider applying for the job? And they actually give us names, and if possible, where they're located. So those are, that's the composition, basically, of the eight questions. That's what we did with every single group. And I will tell you that, like, like Steve, like Molly's, my experiences with these groups was outstanding. You gave us a couple of examples of students, but I really, I got to be with yours, just like a big student leadership group that I did separately of 60 students, and I think there were like 55 in attendance. And that was thrilling. What, what an engaged, and I would say very sharp collection of young people who actually, we should all listen to probably more often than we do. It was a marvelous experience. So Madam President, that's the process that we use. Those were the questions. We shared those questions with Leadership Anchorage. And they, they took those as a foundation, and then, and then, so it's very similar in what we did from a questioning standpoint. They might have created some of their own quote-unquote, you know, community language to it, or, or their own structure. But we were very much aligned in the work, and I really want to thank everybody, Madam President, for you bringing us together. But Leadership Anchorage, because we actually had meetings together before these meetings started. And I had the opportunity to be an, an observant in the initial one, that Leadership Anchorage did. And it's, it's a pleasure to work with, with not only you as a board, and, and with Katie as, as your major staff contact, but to, to watch your community at work. So it's, it's been, from our perspective, a very enlightening process. And hopefully, our findings here will be in line with what you hear from Leadership Anchorage as well. So my, my last question, well, it's probably not a last question, but the, another question is, are you comfortable with the 10 that are recommended? And what do you want, do you want to consider adding one or two of the, of the other two to be considered?
And that's a good segue for board member questions. Member Lessons.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for the work that you are doing on our behalf to help us move down this road. I really appreciate it. One question I have is, how did the hundreds of qualitative statements that we received factor into shaping? Did, did any of those qualitative comments factor into our sort of top 10 plus two qualities? And if so, how? And if not, how do you recommend that we incorporate them in a meaningful way?
From my perspective, when we, when we read down those, and you know, you're well aware of how many pages there are of comments, they, they also set themes and tones and tenants, particularly once you move beyond an individual statement. So they really shape us moving forward, not where we, not, not where we come to you. So they, they have, they have some, some effect on, is this consistent with what we saw in the qualities and the characteristics? Is, are these themes and tenants out of the comments consistent with what we saw as those candidates were actually already screening and vetting for you right now in, in the, the screening and, and process to, to bring your candidates to consider? And then you have an opportunity to use them. They are as beneficial, or probably more beneficial even to you, because they're from individual members of your community. As you consider who you want to take from those, you're looking at to those you want to interview from the first round of interviews to move to the second round of interviews. The, the last thing I would suggest is that you hold on to those comments. There's this part in the open comments, and then there'll be a part in the, in the impression forms for the finalists that will have comments. And they become invaluable to you as a board, and eventually to your new leader, to really look at and digest about how you progress once this new leadership takes hold and where it goes. Part of it is like, is almost taking advantage of an informal poll that just comes out of this information. So we always see this as not only what its value in the selection process is, but hopefully what its value is to you and, and to your new leader in their, their transition and their establishing their leadership format and work. Because they're very insightful, and they really should be considered seriously, not just now in this process, but going forward in your next first year of this new adventure. Steve, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
No, I think that's, that's good. Good explanation.
Thank you. Any other board members? I can't see who's online. Katie, can you give me a, is there a hand up online? Okay, yes. Okay, Member Holloman?
I just want to say, one of the things that I know is a issue for Anchorage, and, and really an issue across the country, is central office control versus local building control. And I, I didn't see anything in the top 10 that directly addressed that. And I'm not sure there's an exact right answer for it, but it is something I'd like for candidates to be aware of and, and discuss. Anchorage has gone through a couple of different iterations in a couple of directions. And I'd be startled if the principals didn't have something to say about that as well, but I, I don't know what they said, so I'm just guessing. But I would like for it to, to be posted in such a way that the candidates we consider know that that's an issue, and, and we do want to know where they stand on it.
You ever, you, you, for the principals, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, the principals did speak to that issue, and it's an important one, especially in a large district. I, I would say that, you know, the item that was ranked somewhere around fifth or sixth promotes a positive and professional environment that includes mutual trust and respect among faculty, staff, administrators, and the board speaks a little bit to that issue. But yes, I would say that principals would be very much in agreement that that's something that candidates need to be able to speak to.
Member Holloman, I would suggest that if, if you now get an opportunity to craft, as we take questions that we offer to you for consideration, but you have an opportunity to accept some, edit some, get rid of some, and develop your own, I, I would suggest that you and your, and all the members of the board take that into account and make sure that there's either a question there, or you craft a question that, that allows you to explore that from each candidate. Because probably the most important part of this is what are you gonna get out of the two stages of interviews?
Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands. Sure, you can. You may. I was trying to find my list of questions.
Yeah. Could you speak to the guidelines you generally share when it comes to the two stages of interview? To the, to the multiple interview stages? How do you guide boards? What do you guide boards to do in the first stage, and what do you guide boards to do in that second stage?
Start out, Steve, please, please add to. In the first, first of all, when you go from the candidates that we share with you for consideration to interview, is the first thing you're really asking yourself is, of these, who do I want to know more from? Who do I want to know more about? Who, who really is in this next step that can lead this district? Whether they're my favorite or not is not as important, but, but who do I really want to explore? And that's when you get a chance to craft your interview questions, get to see them in their response framework, get to hear much more than you're ever gonna have an understanding from an application, a resume, letters of reference, and other information that we share with you. So that, that's, that first stage is, it's more, much more than getting to know them, but it is getting to know them to a point. Then, when you have to go to your two or three finalists, that's when you really have an opportunity to go much more in depth around subjects and topics that you feel are extremely pressing in your district, and that are also pressing for what you either have had that you want to continue, or that you feel might have been still an opportunity that wasn't fulfilled, that now, that you want to see surface in, in this new leadership. And so it, it really, it's a progression, and it's a progression of getting to know these candidates. And then it's a progression of really, really finding out those, those few people that have an opportunity to be your leader, because you talk, you know, it's like the old expression, I talked to you once, I, I know a little bit. I talked to you a second time, I know a lot more. And, and that's, that really is, I, I know it's a generic guidepost. And and that's, that really is, I I know it's a generic guidepost, but because this is a human interaction experience, I I don't have a more finite, there's, I I don't have a, you know, it's these five things here and these four things here. Because before it's all said and done, it's still about fit. It's still about fit from a leadership standpoint. It's still about fit from a relationship standpoint with you. It's still about fit in terms of where you've been and where you want to go. It's still about fit. How does, how does this person have an opportunity to be, to exercise leadership amongst your staff and how do they get to be your face and voice in the community that also wants the superintendent to be, have a very significant seat at the Anchorage Community Leadership Table? So Steve, I don't know, other thoughts on your part? You you've sat in that seat, so I I can only, I can only speak to the seats that the board members sit in, but you sat in that seat.
Now, just some thoughts that I have in that first round. I'm saying that five or six candidates will be interviewed in that first round. I'm not sure if the decision has been made if those, if that, those interviews will be in person or virtual. Often districts do that first round virtually. That's the virtual world we live in these days and we've had good success with that across the nation the past couple of years. Obviously, in person is better, but that's something that I I assume you've been thinking about. But in any case, both rounds of interviews, it's important really to refer back to this list of characteristics that we're talking about tonight and how does the, how do the candidates align with these characteristics? Because this is the list that your stakeholders, including the board, have have come up with. And so it's important to come to agreement on what those characteristics are and then to compare the candidates to them. In the second round, those are typically in-person interviews. I assume that will be the case. We have the the three or four finalists. And the nice thing about the finalist round is that that can be customized to meet the needs of your district. And so in some cases, that includes public forums with both the community, with parents, with staff groups, kind of a round robin, all-day affair is very common format that is used in person. We've also done hybrids where the interview team interviews the finalists in person, but the rest of the day is done virtually because of pandemic restrictions or whatever. But whenever we've done those virtual sessions, even with large groups, we've been amazed at the level of participation just because people are very accustomed to doing those and it's a good way to to engage people. And as Mike said, we engage, we we use impression forums. We're not asking people to vote, only the school board makes a kind of decision. But it's interesting, I think, for the board to look at those impression forms of the finalists to see, you know, what the stakeholders think about the candidates in the final round. So those are just some thoughts on on the two rounds of interviews from me.
Hey, thank you.
Go on. Yeah, follow up, actually, thinking about that first round, if, and maybe this is a question for fellow board members. There may be people who are in Anchorage and or Alaska who could meet in a first round more easily than people who might be outside. And I'm wondering whether we should make sure we have an even playing field.
We should.
And just say, hey, we're going to do everybody virtually, even if you live three doors down.
Well, that that is a discussion we we could have, but I would think that we would want to be as fair as possible in our process and until we narrow it to our final two or three. Okay, any other questions for Ray and Associates? Thank you, Michael, and thank you.
Steve.
Steve, yes. Chestnut. I almost said, thank you, Chestnut. So it's, it has been, I mean, it's, so for board members, if you're still trying to find your data, it's, it was sent on the 18th. Oh, Katie said she just resent it. Because it's a lot of data that's there. And so what I want to do is, unless there are any other questions for this group, let's move on to Leadership Anchorage. So April, are you there? But don't go away, guys. Hi, April.
Yes, I am here.
Oh, and Carmen, welcome.
Yep, our whole team is here today.
Wonderful.
Or today, yeah.
So were you, did you want to introduce the whole team?
Yeah, so our project team was myself, Kima Hamilton, Weston Eiler, Carmen Wanger, and Fadwa Diaz. And you want me to go ahead and just get started?
Yes, April, get started. Tell what your, what charge you were given and just, and when you want Katie to share the screen.
All right. You can go ahead and start sharing the screen.
And while while Katie is doing that, I will just jump in. Leadership Anchorage has been around for a long time. This is, your cohort is number 25?
That is correct.
Okay. So every year, there's a different cohort. Then they look for projects that will help to improve or at least improve and inform our community. And so when I met with them to pitch accepting a charter from the school board to help us reach deep into the community to get information from our families, our partners, people with no kids in school, people with kids in school, any anybody that they they could talk to, they accepted that challenge. So I do want to thank you for that and I look forward to hearing the information. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So like I mentioned, I'm April Idy. I am one of the LA 25 cohort members. I'm also the Alaska PTA president. Today, you'll hear from myself and the four others, Kima, Weston, Carmen, and Fadwa, and hear the results from our community project. Our part in the search was the external ad hoc superintendent search committee. The results being provided today were gathered from town halls we held, one-on-one sessions, group sessions, and additional communications within the community. Not all the data is being presented, but is found in your agenda for today. Thank you again, Margot, for approaching Leadership Anchorage with the project that brought the community together and had great conversations regarding the vision of the new superintendent. We will now go on to our six questions and we took six of the eight questions that Ray and Associates suggested we use, that we asked our community. You'll see our word clouds and you could go ahead and go to the next slide. That the words repeated the most have been students, teachers, community, and so on. Our first question will be presented by Kima.
Thank you. Thank you, April. Thank you, School Board, for allowing us to be a part of such an important process for the community of Anchorage, Alaska. The first question, you know, I'll read it out loud. What do you consider to be the most important values Anchorage holds as a community? The community values most frequently mentioned was diversity with an emphasis on Indigenous history and culture. And, you know, it showed up in Ray and Associates, the the results of of the online survey, like the word diversity, but something that, you know, kept coming up when when we read through the specific answers is the uniqueness of Anchorage's diversity, you know, having one of the most diverse high schools in the country and and being on the Nynna land offers some you, some very specific ways to consider the language diversity. The community value most frequent frequently mentioned was diversity with an emphasis on Indigenous history and culture. Values mentioned frequently included equity, opportunity, independence, acceptance, inclusion, empathy, and compassion. Other values also mentioned for question number one included unity, resilience, fairness, representation, caring, equal access, self-reliance, preparedness, respect, and individualism.
Thank you, Kima.
Thank you.
Question two, next slide. What do you consider to be the Anchorage School District's most significant strength as an organization? What we found the community saying was the school district strengths, which was mentioned most frequently, was teachers and support and school-based staff. Strengths mentioned frequently included student diversity and faculty and staff's appreciation of that diversity, programs for children and families to find opportunities that meet their needs, community support and partnership. And other strengths also mentioned include utilization of technology, strong school board, and centralized decision-making, unity of mission, and a focus on equity. And Carmen, question three.
Thank you, April. My name is Carmen Wanger. I'll present questions three and four and hopefully you have a copy of our report in front of you. The next several questions got quite long. A lot of our respondents had a lot to say, so I'm going to characterize the responses, but you can read the full, full text in our report. So question three is, what is the most important leadership quality you want to see in the next superintendent? And most of the, the most frequent answers to this really had to do with kind of interpersonal relations. The most frequently quality expressed was the ability to see, understand, and respond to issues from multiple points of view. Qualities that were frequently given to our groups often included communication, efficient and effective self-awareness, and a lot of comments around respect for different and diverse points of view, including political, religious, and cultural perspectives, and how we relate to others, including how we interact on teams in our community and how we present, present ourselves with transparency, trust, humility, and collaboration. And the qualities that were also mentioned, that's where we saw a lot of the qualities around them as a person, things like high emotional intelligence, negotiation, adaptability, ability to advocate, and compassion. We can move on to question four. Question four was, what is the most important issue which the new superintendent will need to address? And the biggest issue that was cited by the groups we talked with was rebuilding trust and healing relationships with parents, educators, and students. And this came about from a lot of different angles. A lot of this was characterized in regards to pandemic-related issues, communication, a lot of things stemming from those issues relating in the previous question. And the issues mentioned frequently included working to address pandemic-related effects on education, addressing gaps in student academic and social skills, navigating a clear path to normal in-person learning with a recognition of the disparate impacts and divided views of families around the city, and a number of different responses relating to prioritizing communication needs and retention of teachers and support staff, as well as concerns with health, safety, security, and behavioral health needs of students and workforce. Issues that were also mentioned included trauma-informed schools and wellness, bullying, class sizes, and social emotional learning. And I think we'll move on to Fadwa, question five.
I think she's, you're on mute, Fadwa.
I was excited, by the way. Sorry. So the question is, what is one question the Anchorage School District Board should be sure to ask applicants for the position of superintendent? So the first one was, do you, do you know the native Alaska values, cultures, communities, substance, living, and rural Alaskan communities? How can you help provide the most equitable and robust education for students across a diverse and geographically large district? How will you work to eliminate the achievement gap between students of different socioeconomic backgrounds? How will you diversity the credential staff? What is your understanding of equity and how will you achieve that? How would she he handle discipline for students as they stand right now? What is your definition of equity? What is your experience in creating equitable outcomes for all students? What is your plan for equity and inclusion for PiBa students? Do you have a plan to bring equity to Anchorage School District? What is your position on inclusion in classrooms? What shift must happen in order for ASD to more effectively support its students? Then there's other questions like, do you have experience with managing large budgets? How much experience do you have in the classroom? Effective education relies on the work of dedicated professional teaching staff. What is your plan for increasing retention of teachers? This is, was in question number four too. How do you ensure the voices of students and teachers reach you before decisions are made? And how to, do you ensure feedback from teachers and students reach you after decisions are implemented? How will you approach the problem of poor reading and writing scores? How will you ensure students who do not feel seen or connected to schools will be supported by culture, staff, and curriculum? How will you improve our school district? How will you improve students' mastery of subject matter in foundational knowledge subject? What experience and skills do you have that will lead you to be successful as the superintendent of ASD? What educational thinkers do you follow and why? Tell us more about your educational values and philosophy. Please explain how you show that you value teachers' input. If you could build from the ground up a different and more effective school system, what would that look like? Tell us why we should hire you in our school district, to mask or not to mask. We are having a crisis of public perception versus reality. Can you help ASD bridge the gap? What are your thoughts on being a strong, separate entity from the municipality? What do you value most in your life? And this is what I have for question number five. Thank you.
Thank you, Fadwa, and thank you, members of the school board, for allowing us to be a part of this process. It's been wonderful. For question six, the question is, what is one thing that you would like to share with the superintendent candidates about the community of Anchorage? And I, I won't read all of them, but I think there's a a nice bit of comments in there that I recommend to you. They run the gamut from everything, from trying to, again, frame the context of, you know, how unique and diverse Anchorage is as a community, how unique and diverse Alaska is, characterizing, I think, some of the strengths that it has as the district in terms of really remarkable educational programs, while also acknowledging some of the challenges that we face in Alaska and in community, but also just the value that it places on diversity, both within our school district and within our community as a whole. I think some of the other things that it does acknowledge is really kind of framing and providing, again, context. One of the ones I'll read here, it's, this is a huge diverse school district in a quote "small island." Again, a kind of a big, little community that we have as a district, so much diversity with almost 100 spoken languages is something they share. But I think the one that also sums it up is that we are a strong and independent community, but we value our neighbors and want everyone to have a chance to succeed. And there are also several comments in there that speak to the community of Anchorage's support for public education and really the important role that it has for Alaska and for our community. So that was question six and I'll turn it over to Carmen for some other thoughts.
Thank you, Weston. So we just wanted to express our appreciation. We will turn over the the word clouds that are a good visual representation of the highlights that we heard from the communities and And you hopefully all have the written reports that have a lot of what we presented today, but have some more detail. And even the written report is a compilation of what we heard. Over the few months that we were working on this, we were able to do over 20 outreach and direct connection with over 20 groups in the community. In addition to the four town halls we held, we connected with a lot of other groups either who chose to submit comments through the survey or chose to participate through the town hall process, which we didn't delineate their participation that way. So we had the opportunity to connect with a lot of people through the community, to intersect with the district in a lot of different ways. And so I know for myself, that was a very enriching process and I got to hear from people that I wouldn't necessarily intersect with normally. So I appreciate that our group wanted to express appreciation for all the work we did that did take place on Denina land and were appreciative for the stewardship of the Denin people that we're meeting with on their land today and the work that we took place here in Anchorage. So if there are questions or we can answer more, we're all here and available for you at this time.
Right, thank you, Carmen. So let's see if we have questions or follow-ups on anything. The report is in your, did you? And yeah, so the report was forwarded before, but it will also be posted to the agenda after we meet today. Other questions? I personally want to thank you guys for all the time that this took, all the outreach. You certainly did give us a lot of information from the community. My question though is, could you talk a little bit about the, you know, I know the town halls, we had, did we have, how many did you have? Four?
Four.
Four town halls. In addition to that though, I know some of you were out doing interviews, like small group one-on-ones. Could you talk about a little bit about that process?
Yeah, so we had, I tally them up, we had about 20 connections with other groups representing different constituencies. We, part of our process was that the groups that we met with, we said that their information would be identified in the way we reported it. So we didn't identify the groups in the way we reported the information, but each of the ways we connected with the groups was a little bit different. I don't think we knew when we started out what it was going to look like, but we tried to be responsive to how they wanted to be communicated with. So it wasn't one process, but we tried to keep it consistent in that we used the six questions as a guiding base. So we tried to have all of our conversations around those six questions so we could get information in consistent format. That being said, some of the conversations based on the community drifted a little bit. But some groups preferred us to come and present and had a conversation within a meeting structure. Some groups preferred like us to send the questions. They worked with it internally, sent us back information. Some of it was phone-based connections, some of it was one-on-one interviews. A few of it, a few of them, there was some groups where we submitted the information and they actually like, it's the modern world, they posted questions for in sequential days to Facebook and solicited information off closed Facebook groups that were just for their constituency groups. So we had, it was a lesson in different types of preferred communication styles. So some of it was in person, some of it was over Zoom, some of it was on the phone, some of it was all email. It looked a lot of different ways. Fadwa, if you'd like to add anything about some of the groups you were in, you're welcome to add anything else you have.
Oh, I have nothing to add. You know, I was able to reach different groups like, I had a meeting with Pacific Islander, I had a meeting with African American and Native background, different groups. And English is their second language, like a lot of the community through United Way and Anchorage advocacy program. And it was interesting to see the people input. And it was really, I think they have a great suggestion and I really appreciate it, appreciate their time. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Questions for Leadership Anchorage? Any questions? Yes, member Higgins?
Just to comment, I've been through a lot of HR interviewing type things and the information and presentation was excellent. I appreciate it and I think it's going to be value-added, so thank you.
I appreciate that, Mr. Higgins, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins.
Member Lawson?
Yeah, I think I'm particularly delighted about the last section. Well, second to last, you know, the ideas about what the board should ask. And I thought some of those were excellent questions, so I'll put some of those in my pocket. Thank you.
Okay. Not seeing any more hands. So at this point, I'll open the floor to anybody that have questions for either Ray and Associates or Leadership Anchorage. And I guess my, one final question for Leadership Anchorage, because I know that, you know, as a cohort, you guys had certain standards that you had to meet, right? Or at least requirements for your project. And did this project lend itself to you achieving your cohort, keeping your cohort status? For lack of a better word, I don't know what you guys call it. Because I know, you know, you had to, you chose projects that would do A, B, C and D, and I'm just curious.
If I could offer this, I definitely have appreciated being a part of this process with kids in the school district. It's, you know, made me feel like I have some say-so and what happens next in my kids' educational experience. So, you know, at a baseline, I'm definitely grateful for that. Leadership Anchorage is a program of Anchorage, of Alaska's Humanities Forum. And this project, you know, personally gave me an opportunity to see the humanity aspect of of what happens when we build community and how important the selection of the next superintendent is to the present community, the future of our community. And the word diversity was really the aspect, you know, with the being a project of the Alaska's Humanities Forum and the Leadership Anchorage, you know, a lot of our cohort is kind of designed to center us in our humanity. And I say for a community like Anchorage, the word diversity just means so much more in this community. And in this project and reading through a lot of the answers, this, you know, reinvigorated me about being a member of this community and leaning into the diversity that we have, leaning into the honor that comes with, you know, doing all of this on Denina's land and how unique of an opportunity that is for the Alaska School District. And I think, I know I wouldn't have been able to appreciate this process outside of the experience with the Humanities Forum. So I want to offer that.
Thank you, Kima.
I would like to add.
Yes.
Being part of this project with Leadership Anchorage and my cohort, you know, it was really a fun experience, challenging on my personal side, just with all I have going on. But then, you know, this helps with Alaska PTA as well, kind of helping us like see where we could also help lend a hand with Anchorage School Board or school boards in general across the state with just thinking of those questions that some might not have ever thought to ask. And the community input was, I was surprised, you know, seeing the results and a lot were the same, but a lot were different as well. So I'm happy to have been part of this project and the team that I was on and Leadership Anchorage for allowing me to be part of that program.
Thank you, April. Yes, we have a question. Member Lawson?
Maybe, again, this is a question for the board or board president, or maybe it's a group question. When we get to a second stage, the finalists, and Ray and Associates has suggested that we consider maybe virtual sessions with large groups. Will we be tapping into the Leadership Anchorage asset pool to help with that sort of finalist process?
And that's a good question for, my answer would be yes, but what that looks like, I cannot tell you at the moment. So yes. The work, I think the work, the internal and the external work, I think it's, I'm glad we did both, because I think we, you know, the guidance that it gives us as a board is like invaluable. And so the needs of our internal stakeholders are different than the external, but in many ways, they're, they share some common needs as well, which is what I'm just really happy to see. And so, anybody else wanted to share out their experience with Leadership Anchorage? Before I, I'm going to pivot back to the board having a discussion on what's missing from there, from the top 10 plus two?
It's interesting. I'll share just a little bit, and it almost plays into what you were just saying. Those are my, like, in a community like Anchorage, I feel like internal and external has such a blurred line. So many of us have so many different roles, but I think that plays into it. Like, I really appreciated this project because of how I got to interact with this process and the different lenses that I got to see. And I feel like it helped me build, you know, from your question of, did it meet our goals, Leadership Anchorage? Like, I feel like it did because of the, you know, the ways I got to interact with my cohort members and the concrete steps we took. But from the humanity aspect that Kima was talking with, you know, looking at things from a different perspective and the humanities of it. And so often we're asked to segment ourselves. But the ways, like, I personally interact with the district, I'm a mom, I have a kid in the district and I have a long way to go. I have a kindergartner and someone who's not even in the district yet. And so, you know, thinking about an internal and an external process, I feel like, even thinking about, thinking about it from like the humanities perspective, humanities forum perspective of, who are we and how are we bringing ourselves to a process? And I saw that, I saw that in a lot of the groups, we were talking about who are we talking to and how are they representing themselves in the community? Like, a lot of us are internal and external stakeholders at the same time. And I think that was something I reflected on a lot in this process. And so, who are you asking what questions of and why and how are we showing up? And so I really appreciated this process. I felt I personally got a lot out of it. It definitely met my needs in regards to the cohort process. But also I felt really appreciative to be a part of it as a community member, as a stakeholder and as a parent. So I think, I think there's a lot, a lot here, but I appreciate, I'll send my appreciation to the board for being able to be a part of it as well.
Thank you. And I know we have staff in the room. I don't know if anybody has any, but just, if you have any comments, input, reflections? Happy to hear it. Don't be scared. No, I'm joking. Thank you guys for being here. Okay, so, thank you, thank you, thank you. We're not done with you yet, but the next steps are to be determined. As we get through, one of the things I wanted to do was to just, I want to review our timeline, where we are on our timeline, because we did make some adjustments so that we could take advantage of some professional conferences that were, that were going on. So we did make that adjustment. And so our next, after today, so I want to know if we can get an update on number of applicants, applications received, that kind of thing. And then, yes, and then Katie's going to project our timeline, just so we can kind of see where we are. Okay, so the week of 3/10, that's going to be a long day and board members are, actually it's going to be on the 13th. We've already determined that. And that will be, we will be working with the consultant to develop and finalize our interview questions. Member Holloman has already added a question that he thought needed to be, and I'm not suggesting you have to do it today, but the sooner the better with those questions, if you have your questions. So that work session, and that's a Sunday, Sunday the 13th, it's going to be, will start at 10 and probably go until about 2:30. I think it's 10. Is it 10 or 10:30? 10:30. I think it's 10:30. I'm looking at 10:30. If it's not that, I will, I think we were trying to give you a morning free, but yet be cognizant of the time difference with our consultants. Okay, so, and then after that, we will, you know, we will be narrowing the pool and starting getting ready for interviews. Michael, did you want to add anything to the timeline or any clarity that I may have gotten incomplete?
Once we get through this long meeting, then what we do is schedule the first round of interviews and the five, six candidates you want to interview, what you want to know more from. And then we will, and that's typically done within a week if possible. Now, that's based on your schedules and theirs. And then you will interview them. We will meet with you and facilitate your consensus and decision of who will be your finalists and move on again a week to 10 days after that to bring them in. That's a little longer process. We'll give you examples of different kinds of schedules. And you'll make those determinations about community engagement. We'll make, we'll talk about those long before, but that's when they'll be exercised and what form or fashion. And obviously, would welcome a way to include not only the good work that Leadership Anchorage did, but, you know, if you all see appropriate, engage them and we can work as a team in facilitating different kinds of engagement processes from staff and community. We use an impression forum that give those people that participate or observe the interaction with the finalists, a chance to cast their impressions based on certain characteristic items that are listed and they rank those. They don't get to vote because in all honesty, that's a false expectation. They don't have a vote. The only ones that have a vote are you. But their impressions, we will tally those impressions, chart and graph them for you. So after you have your interview, after, I would suggest after, because I don't want to influence you, but after you have your own interviews with each of the candidates, you will look at these impression forms and they, they will help influence, if you will, or at least have an active participatory element in your thinking as you get ready to choose your new leader. So Steve, I don't know if I missed something, but that's in summation kind of where we are. Your steps after the 13th are typically seven to 10 days, by the time they happen. So if you look at it on the timeline, I want them to say the week of.
The week of, it does, it does. So the work that we do on the 13th is really preparing, we won't be, we'll be finalizing our interview questions. Will we be, will we be, will we see any representation from the candidates? I mean, will they be like, will there be virtual? No, not at that time.
You will review their full application, their resume, their references. Then we will review with you verbally a, what we call a candidate report where we go. go ourselves, interview the candidate, interview their references, find a few other people that aren't their references, but not, may not give them a shout out in terms of their immediate boss at the moment. And then they will do a Spark Hire video, which is their response to a set of four questions that they don't see in advance, and they have 90 seconds to answer each one of the questions. So you will have a visual of them actually responding to questions. It's not the same as an interview by any means, but it gives you a sense of demeanor of the candidates you're considering. So you'll have a visual, lots of, you know, things to read about them. And then we'll, we also will present to you Phase One of our background checks, which will be predominantly the social media about them in all forums, you know, not just Google, DuckDuckGo, et cetera, Bing. And also we will examine news media on them. And we will share those, we will share those even in terms of, is there something that's been raised, or was, was there something that happened in their background that now has been taken care of? Or was there something that if somebody Googles and they find it, and then it was something that was dismissed with no harm, et cetera, dismissed with prejudice, or whatever? We'll share all that information with you.
So, so the process right now, I mean, we should not be hearing from individual candidates or on behalf of any candidates, is that correct?
Absolutely not. Well, I can't tell you what to listen to. There'll, there'll be all kinds of comments, but I would, I would ask that you really look at the information you're going to get from us as we get closer to the 13th. And that's why the meeting is long. You're going to look at 10 or 11 candidates with a whole lot of information that you'll review in advance. You will have looked at their videos in advance. But, you know, I mean, if you have 10 candidates and you spend, you know, 10, 15 minutes on each candidate alone, I mean, you all do the math better than I do, but, you know, you're, you're heading close to two and a half to three hours right there.
Okay, I think I heard, I just heard what I was, the clarification that I was looking for. Before the 13th, we will receive all of this information about the candidate pool, including the background, and then we will come to the meeting on the 13th and we will talk about the interview questions that we want to ask, and we will finalize the individuals we'd like to interview on the 13th.
You will actually have time to, even after that, even after you look at that information, because it may affect a question you may, may not have thought of by reflecting on that information. We typically ask you to look at the questions we offer, and then you'll probably want to consider some of the questions from Leadership Anchorage. And then say, okay, in three days, give us, you know, your top five to seven questions, and they could be questions we suggest that you keep, some that you edit, and you all, and you get up to add two of your own. However you want to structure that, we'll take what you send us back and put them in a group. You probably will not have, typically this first round of questions is 45 minutes to an hour, and you typically have enough time with their opening, and then at the end, they're, they have any, you know, do you have any questions for us and/or do you have a closing statement? So if you take, if you take that into consideration, even if that's only five minutes of time, and you put 12 questions out there, three minutes apiece, you're, you're basically at an hour. So just to give you a scope of what we're talking about. But I appreciated, you know, the reference to some of the questions that were raised through the Leadership Anchorage collection, or some that we might have received that we share with you, or that we incorporate in the questions we suggest to you. So we can do it that day, but I will suggest that there's probably a good chance you'll, you'll have, you know, like 48 hours afterwards, after you look at all this, to say, okay, here are the questions I'd like to submit for consideration, and then we'll put it together for you and give it back to you in advance. And obviously, the candidates can't see any of the questions in advance.
Any other questions? Speak now.
All right, I'll keep asking questions. So when we are interviewing candidates, we will be following an agreed upon list of questions, and even if we might have something surface in our mind, really try to stick to the questions. Okay, got it.
Yes?
Dave, I don't know if you want to speak to that. You're muted.
That's a very important point, and that is, we want every candidate to have the same opportunity to answer questions, so it is very important to stick to the agreed upon questions and not to add one question to one candidate, but not to the others. That's a very important point. And your HR director would give you the exact same advice, I am certain.
Yeah. And, and the only other thing I'll add is we'll actually, the same board member will ask the same questions even, to that point, that, that we try to keep common ground for all concerned.
For all, yeah, great. Okay, so, one of the things I think we will, we will need to do as a board is map out that post 3/13, so I will be getting feedback, information to you and feedback on what we want that, the final two or final three process to look like. Because that would be, those, that would be an in-person visit, not a virtual visit. And so we'll have to plan for that. Okay, I'm not seeing any other, and I guess, Mr. Teeford, that's our HR guy, can you think of anything that we need to be, aside from the process, making sure that we are, you know, we are following the best practice of, and I'm sure Member Higgins won't let us do it any other way, because he's our HR guy as well. But can you think of anything that you can caution or advise on as we prepare?
No, I think what was mentioned, President Bellamy, was an important point, and that is to identify the process, be fair with the process across the candidate pool, and act within the parameters of the law, which kind of goes without saying.
Yes, Dr. Stock.
Thank you, Madam President. Only other, one other thing is you consider the community piece, where you look at different things, such as taking the finalists to field trips to see different schools and so on, and so building some protocols, and maybe Ryan Associates has already provided this, but if not, that if you choose, for example, retired principals or something to be the tour guides, or whatever, that those folks are trained and protocolled as to giving a common experience to each of those candidates. So, because there's, there's pieces like that with as many schools as we have and as diverse as we are, our dates may wish to see a variety of those and each person getting the same experience.
Thank you for that, Dr. Stock. Also a person who's gone through this a couple of times.
At a president and at samples of procedures and schedules and so forth, you'll see those for you all to consider.
Okay, great. So did you want to give us an update on the pool? The applications? I know Molly mentioned that that might be the case, that you might give us a...
Yeah, because it's closed.
The number of applications.
You had, you had 23 applications completed. You had the highest number of... Pardon me?
The deadline has passed.
Correct.
Oh wait, we extended it from the 20? No, we didn't.
It's still closed.
Okay.
Interestingly, and it's the only word I can find, you had the highest number of incomplete applications we've ever seen. And you have to remember that when they start, they get three notices from us to finish it before the deadline. So you had 23 completed, 55 not completed. We usually are in the 20s and maybe 30s, because some people start and it is like, no, and they talk to their family or whatever else. And of that, we are currently vetting, which means we are interviewing, as I explained to you, doing background checks and everything else, on 11 candidates right now. So we'll bring you all 11, or we might, you know, sometimes somebody falls out or decides to withdraw. So I can't tell you it's exactly 11 that you'll see on the 13th, but you're going to be real close at 9:00.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I don't know whether you're allowed to share this or not. Were there a disproportionately large number of applicants from outside of Alaska who did not complete that process?
Yeah, I don't know if I'd say surprisingly, but I wasn't surprised that, you know, the largest number of applicants are from outside Alaska. So I, I actually, I'm happy to get you the answer, that's an easy answer to get, I don't have the answer. I, I think it's a great question, I don't know, Steve, if you did, but I didn't look at the applicant pool from that lens.
No, I didn't either.
All right. Okay, well, this has been great, we have our work ahead. And I'm not seeing any other questions, so I want to thank you for your time, Michael and Steve, as well as Leadership Anchorage. And stay tuned for the next part of this journey. But we do appreciate your time, your expertise, I thank you. All right, and you're welcome to stay, except we're going to... I, I did want to open up a little discussion to see if individuals had other questions that you're thinking about, or comments on the process. I mean, we have time, if you have any.
If we have field trips to schools, how will we identify which schools would be involved?
We're going to work with Dr. Stock and his staff to figure that out, and, and figure out, we got to figure out all of that. And I would think that, Pat, could you share, I mean, Member Higgins, could you share, we had a conversation regarding how that was done, like the final three or the final two candidates before, and how we engaged the community as well as did some field trips and community forums, could you share that?
Sure, I appreciate that, Madam President. We had, we went through the, obviously, the interview process, and we came down to the final three. And when we came down to the final three, we had time in the, we did it in the boardroom, actually, because of the, didn't have the same challenges we have today, but we did it in the boardroom, and we had individuals there, and they were allowed to fill out a sheet of paper with questions, and they kind of gathered them, and then as they went through it, they processed it and selected questions out of it to ask the candidate, to give them a chance to respond. So we had time for each one of the candidates, I think we, I don't remember if we, if we did it on different nights, or the same night, I just don't remember, but I think probably different nights. And so we ended up with all three candidates having an opportunity for the questions that they were being asked at that point. They had a chance to do an introduction, share something about themselves, and then they had a chance to answer questions from the public. And it was a good interaction, it was respectful, I don't know if all the questions were respectable, but it was green, it came out good. And so it was a good process, and I think it allowed, had quite a bit of attendance with staff, as well as the general public, and it got good reception from that. So, and then from that, we got feedback from the public that they had concerns about X, Y, and Z, or they really liked this candidate. And so when we followed it up shortly after that, we made a selection, and, but we had the input on what the public's reaction was to that question and the answer period. So whether we do something like this by Zoom, may be a better way of doing it today for all kind of reasons. Actually, it works pretty good for a lot of meetings, and give them a chance to answer questions, and, and then the questions can come in, and the narrator can select questions out of that to ask within a given timeframe. I think that's probably the very best way to do it, because you could go one after the other under that type of process, give them all, each one maybe 45 minutes, so that you get it all done within a given period of time. They get 10 minutes to start, and then the narrator's getting questions in, and they get to pick from that the question to ask the candidate. And I think that would work pretty effectively and be positively received.
Thank you, and I, I'd like to see the, I mean, some kind of community forum, as well as, I think, having something for our employees would be nice. Maybe not, you know, maybe for the final two. But I love the idea of the impression forms, because that, while people do not get to vote for the next superintendent, we do value their input on who, who has impressed them, and, you know, so I, I look forward to that process. And that whole idea of visiting our schools, I mean, you can't be a superintendent without not getting a feel for what it's like in our, this district is like. And so I would, I would want to also see that we have, I would hope that we would have opportunities to visit schools and to have conversations with our partners, some of our major partners, and nonprofits. All right. Anything else? Well, yes.
I guess I'm, I'm thinking about logistics. You know, it may be a long ways for some people to travel if we have long distance applicants. So I guess that should be accounted for in some capacity. Maybe there's value in having a slight multi-day component, you know, field trips one day, conversations another day, with appropriate, you know, downtime to let these applicants have a little bit of headspace and pull themselves together, and not bombard them with a breakless day. I think that's just a deeply human thing.
For the site visit.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, you know, if we're going to have an in-person gathering, or in-person gatherings for finalist conversations, you know, it occurred to me, we can use Google Forms to, you know, allow people to sign up to attend, I mean, people are aged, and, you know, I wouldn't want to turn people away, but we'd have to figure out, you know, how many people we can fit in the room.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And, and again, I kind of like what Pat said about the, maybe doing it virtual. Because we, there, I think there are ways, things that we, there's a way to shake that, or at least organize it so that we maximize their time with us, but, but, but yet, and still, and, and still, you know, be, keep our protocols in place or whatever, so.
You know, Madam President, if you can have whoever you want there and everybody else online, and you can stream it, if, if they watch it, we, they can be connected to the impression forum. So they don't have to be there to have, to have an impression.
So is the impression form like a Google Doc? Or is it...
It's a Survey Monkey frame.
Oh, Survey Monkey, okay.
Yeah, but it has a set of criteria, so every, they, they take these criteria, and they rate each candidate based on what they see. So, you know, back to everybody having the same, you know, the same set of rules, if you will.
Got it. Okay, seeing no other comments, I'd like to just recognize that Member Wilson joined us in the boardroom, and I think all board members were accounted and present for today. And that, since I see no other hands, we just need to adjourn into the work session, just adjourn. There is no executive session today. So we're just going to adjourn the work session.
To adjourn.
Second, moved in second to adjourn, any opposition? Seeing none, I thank you for your time, we are adjourned.